Ooh, that's loud. It's 9:32 on March 22nd, 2022, so let's go ahead and start the meeting this morning. Erica, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter. Commissioner Henry.
Hey, we have a quorum, so let's go on to Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Tedesco, if you can lead us in the pledge.
......................................................
Good morning, Commissioners. Do you have the motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Thank you.
Slow. There it is. Motion passes three yes and one absent. We don't have any awards and presentations this morning. Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do have one person signed up, but I believe it's the applicant for one of the land use cases today.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience to speak under public comment? Seeing none. Elected officials communication or comments? None, then we'll go to the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you. That's why I was on the wrong screen.
Motion passes three yes and one absent. County manager.
Morning Commissioners. The only item on new business will be a resolution approving Amendment Two to the agreement between Adams County and Allied Recycling Aggregates in the amount of $318,820 for 2022 crushed recycled aggregates, and Public Works Operations Manager Adam Ingles will present this item.
Good morning, Board. How are you?
Good morning, Adam.
Good. My name is Adam Ingles. I'm the Operations Manager in the Public Works Department. I'm here to present Agenda Item, the only Agenda Item we have today, which is a recommendation for the Second Amendment to the contract with Allied Recycled Aggregates. The Operations Division uses these recycled materials to mix and blend various gravel mixtures to support many different service functions. The functions include the Accelerated Gravel Roads Program, as well as the Road Shouldering Program, Alley Maintenance and Resurfacing Program, and the Full Depth Asphalt Patching Program. By stockpiling these materials on hand, the Operations Division can reduce potential delays in manufacturing and shipment from the vendor. Recycled aggregates are the preferred material based on the specific quantities, environmental and sustainability incentives, and reduce overall operating costs. Recycled materials have a lower cost than virgin aggregates. They reduce the carbon footprint and are locally available in Adams County. Pardon me. Allied Recycling did propose an 8.5% increase for Adams County in 2022. The Operations Division feels that this increase is fair and in line with industry-wide escalation. Pardon me. Therefore, the Operations Division is recommending the approval of the Second Amendment to the contract with Allied Recycled Materials to provide recycled aggregate materials in the amount not to exceed $318,820 for a total new contract amount of $842,627.50. Any questions?
Questions from the Board? None. Good morning, Eva.
Good morning.
Good morning. Nope. All right.
All right, so I'll take a motion from the Board to approve.
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, if I might, good explanation. Thank you for your summary.
Thank you.
I move to approve Resolution Approving Amendment Two to the Agreement between Adams County and Allied Recycled Aggregates in the amount of $318,820 for 2022 crushed recycled aggregates.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you so much, Adam.
Thank you.
Go on to the county attorney.
Morning Commissioners. The county attorney's office does not have any business for you all today.
Fantastic, thank you. And land use hearings, do you need time to set up this morning? You do? Okay, so let's go ahead and take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll be back at about 9:45. Ready? Okay, we're back. So, good morning. On to the land use hearings. Morning Jenny.
Our first item is related to the Quantum 56 Special District Service Plan, and we have Greg Barnes to present.
Good morning Commissioners. I am Greg Barnes with the Adams County Community and Economic Development Department. As mentioned, this is the Quantum 56 Metro District case. This case is a request for a service plan to be established in relation to the Quantum 56 development, which you may be familiar with. Previously, we have had this case come before the Board, and rezoning and preliminary plat approval was granted by this body. And currently, there is an ongoing final plat application related to this development. The development covers approximately 60 acres and anticipates about 860,000 square feet of light industrial space. Its anticipated assessed value is around $23.5 million. A metro district is a quasi-governmental entity that can be created via state statutes, Title 32, Article 1 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The site is located here in the center of the screen. The closest intersection is Broadway, which runs north-south here, and West 56th Avenue, which is here. It's located to the south-southwest of where I-76 and I-25 come together. The property, the entire site, is zoned industrial two. It's surrounded by other industrial two-zoned properties to the south and to the east. And then to the north and to the west is I-3 zoning. The county's comprehensive plan is consistent with that zone district. It's designated for industrial use. And located directly to the east is commercial. However, the other directions all have an industrial future land use as well. Chapter 10 of the Adams County Development Standards does list specific requirements for the special district creation, which includes a description of the area to be served, a description of the proposed facilities and services that would be offered by the district, and then a financial plan, which includes cost and debt. The standards also list findings that must be found in order to approve a special district, and that includes if there is an existing or projected need for the services that are being proposed, if the services currently are inadequate to serve the future development, and then finally, that the proposed district can propose a plan to pay off the debt. This particular service plan does include the financing and construction of infrastructure, which includes private streets, traffic and safety controls, transportation, fire suppression, security, and mosquito control. It's also important to note that there are environmental covenants on this particular subdivision, and that would also be part of the service plan. Overall, the cost of improvements are around $13 million, and the maximum debt that would be incurred by this district could be $25 million. The maximum mill levy would be 50 mils, and the interest rate is estimated to be between 6% and 8%, although the maximum could go up to 12%. In addition, the service plan does call for potential revenue sources that include fees, rates, tolls, and penalties. This particular case, if approved by the Board of County Commissioners, will go on the ballot for May of '22, and the anticipated start would be 2023 at a 45-mill levy. We did notify all referral agents within three miles of this site, as required by our regulations, and there were no objections or concerns to this application. When the Planning Commission considered this case on February 24th, there were no members of the public present to speak, and ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application with nine findings of fact and one condition. I do have those findings and condition on a slide, if you'd like me to pull them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Go to my little... Any questions from the Board, for staff? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, so if you recall, we updated our special district regulations a couple years ago. I think it was at the end of 2019, or was it 2020? One of the things that we... Yeah, I don't know which way to look, but generally, one of the things that we were trying to do is, in response to all the concerns out in the community about special districts, metro districts, is the service plans. And the way I understood it is, our goal was to try to say, "Look, the county is expected to approve service plans. They're expected to receive annual reports, and they're expected to do a quintennial We were just having those, taking those obligations, those responsibilities, I shouldn't say lightly, but what we did is we leaned in and said, "Okay, if we're going to take responsibility for that little bit of oversight that exists with metro and special districts," we improved our regs. Can you talk briefly about what was changed and how we're seeing the change of those regs in this application specifically? Did we have a fiduciary or somebody review this who specializes in this to make sure that this service plan is up to snuff?
Yeah, so in part of the... They were adopted in December of 2020, the new regulations, and that included a model service plan, which the service plan is based off of and has met the standards of that model service plan, which include the quintennial... which include the quintennial review, as well as an annual report that they have to bring to the county. Unfortunately, the county is under statutory requirements to process these applications within a certain amount of time. The amendments for the financial review says that we may send it out for a financial review, it was not a shall, and unfortunately, the 2021 and 2022 fee schedules did not include the fee for that external financial review. So this was reviewed by our finance team and Ms. Garcia, who is on the podium as well. We did find that it did meet our financial requirements, and it's also an industrial service plan. So usually, those industrial service plans do not incur as much tax burden on the public. And another thing, and staff can give you an update on that, we are working on updating the 2022 fee schedule to ensure that when we get our influx of applications for the November elections, which should be around May, that that financial review is included. So, I apologize that that wasn't included on there, but we did make sure that it meets all of our standards, and it was reviewed by finance.
Just a follow-up on that, I want to thank you, because I will tell you, I'm extremely disappointed here that it didn't go out for the external review, but the fact that we had our own internal experts look at it to cover that, and the fact that you are looking forward to making sure this doesn't happen again, gives me a lot of comfort. So, thank you to the staff, thank you to the Attorney's Office for that, because a lot of folks are saying the changes that we made in 2020 are really the win-win to provide the county level of oversight while still supporting the existence of metro and special districts. And so, a lot of folks are actually looking at this as a model. And I want to thank the County Commissioners that were part of that decision as well, but also staff who are making this work, because you know, particularly in places like Commerce City, and I'm not going to speak for anyone who lives in Commerce City, but they know those, those taxes are high, people get frustrated with special districts and metro districts. I, I think I can support this, I appreciate that we did the internal review. I'd like to see it, us really lean in on the external review in the future. So those are my comments, and with gratitude towards staff on how you guys are handling this. Thanks.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the Commissioners' comments on this, but I'll make my comments brief. Although we did go through this process, and maybe some of the implementation tools weren't in place at the time, I believe that staff did exactly what they were supposed to do and implemented very well, and I want to say thank you for that. The next thing I want to say is that, I'll, I just want to be open that this was my former plant. This is where I worked for 26 years, and this was called Copper's Industries, and it was a very needed and beneficial plant for the area at the time. Since their closure, I am very proud that a organization and a group is coming by to redevelop this and not leaving it just as a unused portion of land in, in one of our most critical areas in Adams County. And I appreciate all the work that staff has done to make this happen. I'm also very pleased that with this district, it is not associated with residential. That, for me, is, is also key to this, because of the area and the location and the usage. I just want to say that whoever is applying for this, and I'm not naming by name because, but I just want to say that the forward-thinking and the benefits of this will be greatly appreciated by the residents of Adams County. And I just want to say thank you, I think this is a great plan. I love seeing that this old property is being used for something and redeveloped in a different manner. But I just wanted to say, this is special to me, because I love seeing this transition into the next phase, so, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Is the applicant present and would like to make a presentation? Come on down if you want to state your name and address for the record.
Hello, good morning. My name is Sarah Laverty at, what is the address? 1401 Lawrence Street in Denver, Colorado, 80202. So, thank you all for being here. I didn't prepare a presentation, Greg covered all the high points. We're here to answer any questions you might have afterwards. And just to introduce myself, I work for a company called Enviro Finance Group. We are partnered with Heinz on this project, and together, we formed an entity called Quantum 56 Phase 1 LLC. So you might hear this project referred to a lot as Quantum 56 or Q56. So as Commissioner Tedesco said, this was a longstanding employment center for the county for quite some time. The plant did close, I believe, the summer of 2020, and as a result, it is a fairly severe brownfield site. So this is an area where a metro district is a really critical tool for us as the developers to be able to finance a very complicated, not just remediation, but also, it's got some fairly complicated infrastructure to work with here. It's also, a metro district in situations like this is a great vehicle for that ongoing environmental compliance with the state. So we've done this before in past projects, and it's worked really well between the Met District and CDPHG. It gives CDPHG a single point of contact with the Met District and someone that has some institutional knowledge, and doesn't spread that around multiple different sites, because as we all know, once these get developed, different lots can be owned by different groups. So kind of in closing, we see a Met District in this particular application as a great tool for both economic development and environmental remediation. And then just to hit on a couple of points that you said, well, this didn't go out to a third-party review. For our underwriting, we tied a lot of our assumptions on the Crossroads Commerce Park project, which you can actually see in that slide. It's right nearby, it's also a new industrial park. So when we estimated the assessed value of the properties, we looked to that kind of as our model to pin those rates, and used a lot of the same kind of assumptions, slightly more conservative on the interest rates that we're going to get and things like that, to try to make the model that we put forward in the service plan more of a worst-case scenario than the assumed what we're going to do. So the service plan shows that even if we have to, you know, assess all 47.5 mils, we can still pay the debt back in a very reasonable rate. Obviously, our plan is to not assess that many mils and to have more favorable financing in terms. And then, there will be a required third-party review before we can issue debt. So even though that didn't get done before this, you can't go out and issue debt without that third-party review. And then, the other thing I will say, for an industrial metropolitan district, it's always a very delicate balance between how many mils you put on the property, because that increases property taxes, and industrial tenants are very aware of their property tax. So, if you put too many mils on the property, you might get bigger debt issuance, but then you have to worry about not getting your lease rates, and that's also how you make money. So it's a very kind of fine balance that you have to find. And then you shall also be able to know, there is a covenant that does prohibit residential. So this is not a site, because of its history, that will have residents on it going forward. So, happy to answer any questions, and then John with McGeady is also here, if you have questions more on the legal side.
Terrific, thank you so much for that. Questions from the Board? Seeing none. Anyone from the public like to speak to this project? No one? Any further discussion by the Board? Then I will take a motion to approve or have further discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of PLN 2022-00002 with nine findings of fact and one condition.
Second.
The motion passes four to zero. Thank you so much. Alicia?
Oh, and by the way, if you find my watch out there... Really missed that watch.
They didn't find it. 60 acres.
So our final case today is related to the Brendel Minor Subdivision Final Plat, and Leila Bajalan will present this item.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Leila Bajalan. I'm with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you is the Brendel Minor Subdivision Final Plat. This is case number PLT 2021-31, and the address of the subject request is 5254 Raleigh Street. This request is for a minor subdivision final plat to create two lots. To provide a little bit of background on the subject property, the parcel was created through a plat correction in 2017. This plat correction involved combining the eight existing lots into two separate lots that created two parcels. This image shows the location of the subject property. It's located northeast of the intersection of Raleigh Street and West 52nd Avenue, which is the border with the city, county, and Denver. This area is located near Regis University, and surrounding properties are primarily developed with single-family dwellings or duplexes. And this area has seen recently a lot of duplex development within the area. The plat correction I referenced earlier, so originally, these two lots were one parcel with eight existing lot lines underneath. The plat correction combined them to allow for two separate parcels, and then the applicant is requesting to split this parcel again into two lots. The aerial does show that this property is vacant, however, duplex has been built on this property within the last year, and the applicant is requesting to split the lot to allow for the duplexes to be on separate lots. So the current zoning of the property is residential 2, and the purpose of the residential 2-zone district is to provide a residential district which permits both two-family dwellings and single-family homes in a moderate density setting, and all surrounding properties are also zoned as residential 2 as well. And then the future land use designation on the property is urban residential, and the purpose of the urban residential future land use is for single and multiple-family housing, typically at urban densities of one dwelling per acre or greater. And again, all surrounding properties share that urban residential future land use. So the criteria for approval for a minor subdivision final plat include that it conforms with the subdivision design standards, that the applicant has demonstrated proof of adequate water supply and adequate sewer service to service the proposed subdivision, that any soil or topographical conditions have been identified, that there's adequate drainage infrastructure in place, and adequate public infrastructure that includes curb, gutter, and sidewalk, that the request is consistent with a comprehensive plan and all applicable subarea plans in the area, that it's consistent with the development standards, and that the subdivision is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. So this image is looking at the proposed final plat submitted by the applicant. This shows the proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2. So the dimensional standards outlined in Chapter 3 of the Adams County Development Standards and Regulations state that there's a minimum lot size for a two-family lot in the residential 2-zone district of 3,500 square feet. Both proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2 will meet this requirement. And then the minimum lot width for a two-family internal lot in the R2-zone district is 35 feet, and both Lot 1 and Lot 2 will meet this requirement as well. In addition, the applicant has provided documentation that confirms that the current duplex is being serviced by Denver Water and Berkeley Sanitation, demonstrating that there is adequate water and sewer service provided to this property, and it meets all dimensional standards of the R2-zone district. So here are a couple of images looking at the subject site. This is looking to the northeast on Raleigh Street. This is looking at the duplex that has been built on the property. Again, this duplex is sitting on one parcel, and the applicant is requesting to split the lot along the party wall to allow for each unit of the duplex to be on separate lots. So this image in the top-left is looking to the north along Raleigh Street. Again, this area is primarily developed with single-family homes, and then there are a lot of duplexes that have been built in this area recently. The top-right image is looking at the access for that lot that is behind the existing duplex. The bottom-left is looking to the south along Raleigh Street. Again, you can see there is still a mix of duplexes and single-family residential within their, this area. And the bottom-right is looking to the west at some of the single-family homes that are directly across Raleigh Street from the subject property. So during the referral period, staff notified all property owners and occupants within 750 feet of the subject site. We sent a total of 313 notifications, and we received one public comment. This public comment was in opposition, stating that the county should not have allowed a duplex to be built in front of another house, and they also expressed concerns over the applicant's written explanation. This comment is more applicable to the plat correction that was approved in 2017. That plat correction met all criteria of approval at the time of approval, and a duplex is a use-by-right in the R2-zone district, so a single-family home or a duplex could have been built on that new lot. We also notified several referral agencies throughout this process, and there were no concerns identified in this review. And this case was heard at the Planning Commission on February 25th. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval, seven to zero, with 11 findings of fact and one note to the applicant. There were no members of the public there to testify in support or opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission had very few questions, only asked if utilities are going to be separate for this duplex, and the applicant was able to confirm that there's two separate taps and no utilities would be split by this new parcel line. So in summary, this request complies with the development standards and regulations. The applicant has provided documentation that shows proof of adequate water and sewer services to the subdivision. The request conforms with the subdivision design standards, and it is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. So staff recommends approval of the subject request with 11 findings of fact and one note to the applicant. And here are my recommended findings of fact, and then note to the applicant, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you Leila. Questions from the Board? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, could you pull up the map again, the aerial? I'm, I'm a little confused by why we're here. So help me out about why we're here, because it sounds like in 2017, they've got it, they subdivided, and so, to the right of that green-ish-blue box is the original house that's on the lot, right? And then they separated that house from this green-blue box, right?
That is correct, yep.
And then, once that happened, that green-blue box is its own parcel. And when we changed the maximum square footage from 9,000 for duplexes down to 7, was it? I thought we changed the, in 2020, so now, you have to have 3,500 per unit, so it was 7,000, right? It went from 9,000 to 7,000. But I thought, when you build a duplex on a parcel legally, like this is as a use-by-right, you don't have to come in for a subdivision approval. That's why I'm confused. Am I wrong? Can you help me understand what's going on here?
So you are not wrong. You can build a duplex on the property, however, the duplex is sitting on one parcel, one lot. So the applicant is requesting to split the parcel into two lots, so each unit of the duplex is its own separate lot and could be sold separately. Otherwise, the applicant would have to do a condo plat in order to separate the two units.
So a condo plat, let me make sure I understand this, only separates the building, but not the land parcel underneath? Is that correct? Thank you for the clarification, because I thought it was the condo plat as an administrative action, not requiring to come in front of us. So maybe the attorney can help summarize.
Yeah, so in order to actually split the lot and the land underneath it, they need to go through a subdivision, which is what is in front of you today. If they wanted to split the improvements on the lot, so the duplex and not the land underneath it, they could do a condominium plat, which goes through the assessor's office and is just on file with them up there.
Okay, and then my next question will be for the applicant then. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Odoricio. Oh, I'm sorry, Tedesco.
Thank you Emma. Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn. Commissioner Baca, I apologize. So my question is probably more for the applicant as well, but the, the question I have is, if we knew we were building a duplex, and we went through the process before to subdivide the property originally, why was it not done at that time? And then my second question would be, and it's probably for staff, is, how common is it for us to divide a property like this with a common law? And legally, I just think that's a nightmare, but for owners. So, I don't know if I'm very clear about the second question, but it's, I don't remember ever seeing us do this before.
Actually, if I may Commissioner, based purely on construction experience, this is not an unusual way to do it, simply because you want that property line to match that party wall line. And so, as long as you know you have the methodology in place, that you can come in and create that subdivision of the property after construction, it's more technically accurate to do it as a final step.
Yeah. Like, come on down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Steven Brendel, 5254 Raleigh Street in Denver, 80212. So to answer your question, I was just as confused as you were, quite frankly. And I built this, my intention was, my daughter's going to Regis University. She did, she did her undergrad for four years, played soccer, and she was gonna go into physical therapy for her doctor degree, which she's doing right now. And we've been, I was paying like $3,000 a month for rent for, you know, for a bungalow, and it was, and I thought, well, what if I could build a duplex? So that's how I got to this point. So again, I was just as confused as Steve was, and quite frankly, I thought it would be a staff situation too, where we could just put the dividing line, and you, as far as your concern was, when we build the townhouse, the townhouse is built exactly the same way as a duplex today. There's a firewall between the two units, and it's very, it's, that's how it's done. And that's what I thought, again, was how it was supposed to be, and that's what I was led to believe when I came in and talked to the county. And quite frankly, a duplex, you know, you have to have two separate addresses, but there are 5254A and 5254B, which is really confusing for any kind of services, fire, police, or whatever. And for the other reason, construction costs went up like 35% in 2021, and it was out of the question at that point to actually have an income property, because, you know, if you have an income property and it's the construction costs alone were over $400,000 plus the land costs, you know, I'd have to rent the thing out for, you know, $6,000. When I hear that number, I'm old, but that's a lot of money, and I don't think, you know, that makes any sense. So I wanted to have the ability to be able to keep my daughter in one house and sell the other property. That was my purpose.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, I'm still a little perplexed, because that's my understanding that you could do a, and maybe this isn't a conversation for you. You're doing it, you're getting it done today, I'm going to support it. That whole neighborhood is R2. We're going to see duplexes everywhere in that neighborhood, because we also generally support higher density in these more urban settings. At least I will continue to support it. But I was just saying, like, it's my understanding that a condo plat that could have been done through the assessor's office still would have allowed you to sell the building, the other half, but you just would have had shared land underneath, so you'd have like a common, you'd have to have some sort of agreement with the two parcels as to how that's going to be maintained. But if I'm wrong, the staff can correct me. These are more technical questions. I'm still a little perplexed about how, you know, you could, you still could have been able to sell the other parcel, but I think this is the cleanest way, because now you're going to have two different parcels, they're fine. And I think the big thing that changed from what I'm seeing is that we went from 9,000 as our requirement down to seven, and that was a game changer in the last three years. So I think that staff has done an outstanding job trying to get it. It's just the confusion here is, I could see why you were confused, I still am a little bit, but I still, at the end of the day, I support what you are doing today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Right, no, thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment? Doesn't appear so. Any further discussion by the board? Unusual. That's all I have to say. But I understand why you would go this direction in a subdivision versus a condo, because then you would be responsible for the land, if I understand that correctly, because the condo, you just basically own the air and the structure and not the land. So, okay. Then if there's no further discussion, then we can move on to a vote.
Madam Chair, I move to approve case PLT 2021-00031, Brendel Minor Subdivision Final Plat. That would be with 11 findings of fact and one note.
Second. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. All right, we are adjourned today. If there are no other matters, there aren't on the agenda, we're adjourned today at 10:19. Thank you.